For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening, welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of February 1st, 2016.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noak?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Please present a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we make modifications to the agenda? I think we have a couple.
We need to add the State of the City under Report of Officers.
Okay. And that's a motion? We do both of them at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay, the other one, I'd like to remove the proclamation. The recipient has fallen under the weather, so we're going to postpone that to another meeting. Make that part of your motion.
And I'll make that part of my motion.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes for regular session of January 18th. Any issues or changes? Pardon me. Citizens bearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. Adam?
I'm the Planning Development Director. Just wanted to throw up a training opportunity that we're having here in Alpena. The MSU extension is conducting a citizen planner series, and I've helped me to organize that along with the coming townships as well. So I'm very much encouraging the planning commission to attend, but certainly it would be something I think would be beneficial for city council or whomever from the public that would want to do that as well. That's going to be Tuesday night, starting the late March, and it's going to be every Tuesday night for about seven weeks. So, other than that, just let me know if you're interested or if anybody else is interested, and I'll make the appropriate preparations. Thanks.
Excellent. Okay. A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $215,874.41. B is one city council appointment to the Recreation Board for a three-year term expiring 2/1/2019. It's Thomas Dowd. C is one city council reappointment to the Wildlife Sanctuary Board for a three-year term expiring 2/1/2019. Judith Kellman.
May I approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Thank you.
Nielsen?
Oh, sorry. I dropped the gun.
No.
Okay, no presentations. Announcements. There will be an intergovernmental meeting at the Apex on Thursday for 2016 at 7:00 PM. It's a meeting of city councils, county board of commissioners, and all eight townships coming to that meeting, so if anyone is interested. Hearings, Report of Officers, State of the City report summary of the city manager.
Well, I've handed that out to at least the press. I go through it, and we should be out of here by nine o'clock. Because I have a show that I like to watch at now. A lot of research is done. The concept of State and City addresses is not new. Certainly, there was the State of the Union. We just had shortly, not that long ago, a State of the State. But at least in my 18 years here, we've never had a State of the City. But I do think it's important to reflect upon your previous year, the accomplishments, challenges, issues, and shortcomings in the look to the year ahead, what the priorities that we may be setting, the challenges we'll face, and the dreams we worked to make into realities. I'm going to hit on four main areas: general trends, city management and organization, city initiatives and projects, and then challenges and priorities moving forward. To start, I guess it's rather easy to say that the past year has been an eventful one, and the way this year has started out, I don't see it being any different than 2015. In the general trends, especially in regard to economic development, we are in that process, I believe, of a rebound from the Great Recession of 2008. We've begun to see property values slowly inch their way up rather than the precipitous declines that we had for a number of years. This has been primarily led by the residential sector, but we are beginning to see that stabilization and a slow turnaround. In some areas of the state, especially downstate, as I keep reading, some of their values have already gone back to the 2008 levels, and in a few cases even surpassed. Ours are not getting there that quickly. We're much more modest, and with the Proposal A limitation on the increases in taxable value, you can have a very large fall, but it's a very slow recovery back. And it's going to take many years probably for us to recruit that unless we have some major development that suddenly adds to the tax base. However, that trend, though, is still very obvious. It's there, and we've seen it in a number of areas of our city and the surrounding townships and in the countywide. Within the city, the DDA is seeing an increase in businesses, some 17 new ones that occurred in 2015, which has reduced the vacancy rate of the first floors of buildings down to less than 10%, which is probably one of the lower levels that we've had in a while. Obviously, we're going to have fluctuations, and we're still going to see businesses close, others come in, but the trend seems to be on the positive side. We've also had a number of projects that have stimulated economic growth and also begin to change the physical being of the downtown as well. And we are seeing that with a number of projects. The Holiday Inn Express, which someday seem to be, are we ever going to see it? But it is beginning to move. They've got materials on site, and it is still projected to be finished here in 2016. We've got the project that will be getting underway very shortly. It'll be going out to bid, which will be a major change in our downtown, is the Alpena Furniture Building, where we'll have 10 new residential units on the second floor and a major facade renovation, both the street front and on the rear of the property. Also, we're having two more units that are finishing up right now in the 100 block of North Second Avenue. The Owl Restaurant is under renovation right now. All of these have been, most of them with grants that the city has invested in and time and effort. The Owl will also have outdoor dining, which will be an addition that will go into the Chisholm Street Park, which also will have, hopefully, the completion of the mural, the underwater mural of its 3D fish, should be completed this spring as well. And probably the biggest project outside of the hotel will be the demolition this spring of the former Alpena Power Company, really that entire block, and to prepare it for redevelopment. The property's been transferred to Target, and they are already working on seeking developers and are having talks with some right now. That project in itself is going to be a very key to the downtown along with the hotel at a very key intersection along the river, and those projects are ones that are probably going to begin to change the face of our downtown. As I said, the city's played a key role in most of these projects, and I will point out that Adam Pauls, our Planning Development Director, has been intimately involved in just about every one, a lot of hours, and I can attest to that from having done the job in the past, knowing that it's even more work now, the way these grants work than they were before. So he's done an excellent job and continues to keep those projects moving forward. And even outside the downtown, we've had on Chisholm Street, Thunder Bay Chrysler Jeep Dodge will be expanding their facility here this year. That'll be a major development in that block. And across the street, we are getting underway with the six apartments in the old St. Vincent DePaul building. And then just a little farther north from that, you have McDonald's, which you probably just saw in the newspaper. They'll be tearing that building down, building an entirely new one. That will be a definite enhancement to the street. There are other projects that are in kind of discussion stage, but with all these, it's a real turnaround for that corridor of Chisholm Street, which has been, in many ways, a neglected commercial area within the city. So it's nice to begin to see those things happen in that area. The other probably big news is that we got a brewery back in town with 2015, in October with the Austin Brothers Beer Company opening. And from every indication, it has been very successful, and our hope is that that will continue to be so. The city again was involved with that, not only dealing with zoning issues, but also brownfield. That site is a groundfield. We used our remediation fund to help them take care of some environmental activities on that site. Also outside the city, we've seen a lot of activity as well, the opening of the new Meyer store, plans for new retail development along both US 23 South and North that have been announced, and at the county airport, plans are moving forward for the testing of drones by private companies, which is likely to result in increasing unmanned aerial systems activity at the airport. Together, these projects, in my opinion, paint a picture of growth and, above all, optimism for the economic well-being of the greater Alpena area. This is good news for all the political jurisdictions and all citizens, whether they live in the city, Alpena Township, or any of the outlined townships. Successful one is indeed successful for all. Another aspect of a trend that we've seen really grow in our community is what I call community activism. And this is basically what I call the community's inner strength and commitment, at a level at which citizens and businesses give back to the community more than just paying their taxes. By that standard, the city and the surrounding communities rank highly, which bodes well for our future. Some examples are here in the city, individual citizens and groups stepping up to adopt a park or to adopt a street, weeding flower beds, pruning shrubs, picking up trash, both in the parks and along the roads. The Alpena Garden Club has been very instrumental in working in our parks, maintaining the flower and planting beds at Water Tower Park in the rain garden right along the river, and also the planting areas that lead to the new covered bridge at Duck Park. Rotary Club has maintained Rotary Island Park in an agreement with the city. It's their park, but it's open to the public, but they have made a lot of improvements there. They also, in the past, did the play structures at Starlight Beach. And then at our last meeting, they stepped forward, offering a partnership to this city, which the council accepted, to work on the development of a splash pad at the Starlight Beach as well, which was always a major element of our master plan for the park and has been one that's been anticipated for quite a while, and now there's a possibility it would actually become into reality. The Newton Lions Club and the Alpena Soccer Association, actually it's the Thunder Bay Soccer Association, are participating in the development of our new trailhead up on Woodward Avenue. Again, valuable partners in that project. And then probably last and absolutely not least, probably the biggest example of volunteer of a volunteer project and a commitment by individuals and the community as a whole has to be the new Island Park covered bridge in the water tower and the associated landscaping that was completed this fall and was the brainchild of Mike Konjorski. Mike orchestrated the project like a symphony from conception, design, soliciting the materials and labor, coordinating of the many trades and individuals involved in the actual construction, much of it by himself and his crew. Additionally, the lumber and many of the other materials were directly donated by Mike. Why did he do it? Because of his love for his community and his desire to give back. His enthusiasm and passion rubbed off onto others through the donation of materials and/or labor, often without ever being asked. As the project developed, others wished to be a part of it, including members of the city fire department who volunteered their time to lay the concrete pavers at the bridge approaches. The result has been a picture-postcard transformation of the park and the northern entryway into our city. It has quickly become the new face of Alpena and one of the most photographed images of our community. Later this spring, we will formally dedicate the bridge, tower, and the beautiful landscaping properly, recognizing Mike and all those that contributed to this incredible new piece of Alpena. With such caring and impassioned citizens, Alpena has a very bright future ahead of it. There is little doubt that with such a spirit, we can work through the toughest of times and move our community to greater heights. Now, the field in the sector of city management and organization, which primarily falls to my responsibility, it's one of my, it is my prime responsibility, is the oversight of the operations of the city staff and its departments. During the past year, we did successfully negotiate four of our five union contracts. The fifth is actually, as our state later, will be happening here this spring. We'll be working on that. And that was with DPW Clerical Police Patrol and Police Command. We were, this time, able to give at least modest raises to everybody. Still did not have the length of contracts that we would like, primarily due to a lot of unknown economic conditions that still sit out there, but it is one that was proved both beneficial, I believe, to both employees and the city as a whole. We also instituted a new defined contribution retirement plan for those employees who fall under that, and it is actually a cost savings to both the city and the employees, so we saw that as a benefit. Ultimately, as a service organization, the city's greatest asset is its employees, and by working together and investing in their long-term well-being, the city and its citizens benefit from a more efficient and effective operation. Employee wage and benefit packages make up the bulk of the city's budget in managing those costs, as well as all other costs, as an ongoing effort of each city department. This is even more critical with the severe drop in property tax receipts and state revenue sharing over the past several years. Although both have stabilized, limitations on the taxable value rate of growth due to Proposal A and ongoing state government limitations on increasing law statutory revenue sharing will continue to inhibit the city's overall revenue picture, and it will take many years, if ever, to reach the revenue levels of the early to mid 2000s. Despite this, through the ongoing excellent management by our department heads and really all the staff and employees within the city, and the vigilant, vigilant, not vigilant, vigilant oversight by our Clerk, Treasurer, Finance Director, the city was still able to, at the end of fiscal year, ending June 30th of 2015, with a fund balance in excess of $2.9 million. As I previously had mentioned, the numerous businesses and the expansion of existing ones in both the city and the neighboring jurisdictions reflects the turnaround in our area's economic outlook. And of these, the city has been involved, either in many of them, either directly or indirectly. The city has also taken it upon itself to invest in its own infrastructure and assets that will enhance the quality of life for our residents, visitors, and businesses, making us a more attractive place to live, work, raise a family, and operate a business. Some of these projects include our current, the trailhead project that is underway on Woodward Avenue up through the, just north of the soccer fields. That project will be completed this spring and will have, then create a direct connection between our, between the northeast state trail and the city's bypass system, which will allow people to come directly into our downtown by bicycling, walking, whatever, by utilizing that trail. It will have restrooms, a pavilion, lighted parking, bike racks, picnic tables, so it could be a jumping off spot to head out onto the trails away from the city or kind of a beginning point leading into the city. Another project is one that's been a rather ongoing one, and one that is heading probably more downs than ups, and that's the purchase of the US 23 North property that we did shortly after I came here. So it's been quite a while, and we spent roughly a million dollars to do so, but as of yet, we have no development on it. There are multiple reasons, but one that certainly has affected it has been once we did a wetland determination and found that there were wetlands that run parallel to the highway and pretty much reduce the effective development of our frontage, and in fact also blocks any access from 23 to the rear 75 acres that is very developable. The city, after a lot of work by the, especially the city engineering department and, most notably, Steve Schultz, in putting multiple applications together, being rejected, going back, we were able to get it narrowed down to where we did get approval. Council did approve it, and with, I think, heavy reservations, and I understand that completely, but it will allow us to get an access road back and infrastructure, our water sewer back into that rear area off 23. And that will be very important. It will make it much more desirable to develop that land, and I think will pay dividends down the road to the city. Also, the city's been involved since I've been here, because I've been the person that's been representing the city for 18 years, first the Dial-A-Ride and Thunder Bay Corporation, Transportation Corporation, and now Thunder Bay Transportation Authority. And it's now getting to the point where we'll be very soon beginning construction, hopefully, of our new operations facility at the southeast corner of Hamilton Road in 23. That project, the building which will cover an acre of land, just the building, will be somewhere in the five to six million dollar range, will not only serve Thunder Bay Transportation for many, many years to come, but also, hopefully, as the first major project up on that corridor in a long time, will help be an impetus for future development in that area and including our 23 North property. So in that regard, we see it as a win-win for everyone. In the spirit of true governmental cooperation and assistance, the city, and actually this occurred in 2016, though the work began much before that, has entered into an agreement with Presqueo Township to provide first responder fire protection and EMS services to Township Fire District Number Two and to assist the township in reestablishing its own fire and EMS department. We'll be utilizing the expertise of our department to help them in hiring, in vetting future employees, acquiring equipment that is necessary to operate the department. The goal is that when the three-year agreement ends, they will have their own operating fire and EMS service for that fire district. Fire Chief Forbush, Deputy Chief Adrian, and the firefight EMS union all work together to cooperatively to ensure that the city could provide the assistance while maintaining full protection and service to city residents and businesses. So we are looking forward to that. That should be commencing in about 30 to 60 days, that agreement. The city does continue to modernize its water and sewer system, and has been doing so this past year to the tune of around one and a half million dollars. And we expect this to grow based upon our needs within the RCIP. In 2014, the council made the difficult decision to support a staff recommendation to raise water and sewer rates to provide for the long-term sustainability of the system. We have begun to see some dividends, though modest, relative to that investment. However, due to the ongoing dispute with Alpena Township over the new rates, the amount of revenue dedicated to replacement and upgrades is less than it could be or needs to be. These funds finance improvements to the system that benefit all users, including the township. These and other projects help the city to position itself to support existing and future development necessary for the overall economic health of our community. It is essential that the city continue to invest in itself for its citizens and businesses both today and tomorrow. We have done well under difficult economic circumstances. We must continue to maintain and enhance these efforts in the years ahead. As we look forward, we certainly have challenges, and we have priorities that we need to set. The challenges that I see, one is our tax base. Again, we are seeing what we hope is a bottoming out and a recovery now of our property tax values. However, we do have what is now beginning to enter into play is the personal property tax reform that was enacted by the legislature a year or so ago. We've already been dealing with that for a year or two with the small businesses, those that have, I think it's 80,000 or less of personal property, which are simply exempt no matter what their business is. But the big one will be the large industrial personal property tax, and those are going to be, that reform and those taxes are going to be phased out over the next several years. The state says that we are going to be fully reimbursed. I've read what they're doing. I know Jeff, I believe, is heading to a, or have you gone down, to a workshop where they're going to be explaining some of this, and hopefully he'll be able to bring back some additional insight. But from things I've seen, I'm not sure how we can ever be fully reimbursed. It will be wonderful if we are, but I just, I am, let's say, suspicious and not overly optimistic towards that. Until there is really clarity and we start to receive some of these reimbursements and we see what those dollars are, we're going to have to continue to be conservative with our revenue forecasts and then adjust expenditures accordingly. Tax abatement and TIFs, the city's been using those for a number of years, really since I've been here, anywhere from industrial facilities that have helped businesses such as Lafarge and Omni in the past, and also commercial rehabilitation, neighborhood enterprise zone, and personal property tax. They have been beneficial in regard to getting, helping projects to move forward, but at the same time, some of them, especially the length of them, have been detrimental in terms of the revenue that the city is foregoing for extended periods of time. We really haven't addressed much of that over the last year or two by setting, putting in place criteria that determine how much of an abatement and how long you will have it, based on capital investment and job creation. This has eliminated where you just automatically get the most use you can get, and get the top abatement. In essence, businesses really have to be able to show and demonstrate that need for the abatement. As personal property tax, especially on industrial, is exempted, I think we're going to see us looking even more closely at abatements that they may be requested in the future as certainly the loss or the elimination of the personal property tax is going to be a major abatement, ongoing abatement in itself. TIFs are also another issue, primarily groundfield. We found them to be very effective. We've tried to limit the length of them, but again, I think we need to be very cognizant of the fact that they do remove tax base in terms of revenues we get. It's not that they're not paying the taxes. It's not that they're not paying the taxes, but they're going back to pay for eligible activities rather than going, going into revenues either for the city, the DDA, and the other taxing jurisdictions. So all of these things we need to look at and balance between the need that a project may have for these incentives in order to move forward and balance that with the, our need for tax revenues in order to provide the services that our constituents expect us to provide. Another challenge is going to be legacy costs. These are certainly our pension, our retiree health, and even our ongoing active employee health insurance. We have changed things, we're getting away from defined benefit, moving into defined contribution, retirement programs, and that is, well, over time, eventually saves some money. We have some costs that actually raises costs initially, but then we should begin to see some savings on that. Within our public safety, where they are remaining in the defined benefit, we have been able to lower their multiplier and increase their contribution. But it's still a struggle in order to keep those, our pension funds fully funded and to provide a cost-effective retirement plans for our employees. Our current defined benefit pension currently is just a bit over 80% funded, and of course our goal is to get it back to 100%. It's been several years since we've been there, but that is our goal. But it is a struggle, and it's one Karen keeps a very close eye on. The water sewer rate litigation with the township, I think we're all probably very aware of that, and an awful lot, I have to say. I think it is, at least especially to those like me who are not lawyers, don't always know how the legal process works and operates, that it is, can be a very frustrating process due to its length and its cumbersomeness. However, the ultimate outcome is important to the long-term sustainable funding formula for the water sewer system that serves not just the city, but a significant portion of Alpena Township and beyond. So it is something, the outcome of this litigation will have important ramifications for all of our customers. Two others are the proposed truck route, which has created its level of controversy as well. Staff has been working on that, just come up, has come up with a general concept and a rough estimate. We have received some, some partial funding. However, the project is a long ways away from being a go project. There are issues of overall community need, impact on Alpena Community College, reliable truck usage numbers, environmental issues, attainment of necessary easements, and filling the funding gap are just some of the issues that we need to thoroughly review and address. The hope is that staff will be able to do that this year and be able to bring back and report to council so that they can make ultimately the final decision as to whether we move forward with the project or not sometime around the end of the year, perhaps early next year. The earliest we would see construction, if the project were to move forward, would be sometime in 2017 at the earliest. One thing, though, that we are looking at is that part of that project was water and sewer, running a new water line to replace an undersized one that runs along the railroad track and replacing it, running all the way from Miller Street up to Long Lake Avenue there at the intersection with Commerce Drive. Also to run sewer up about halfway so that it would in essence be able to, to provide service to all the land that's back in there, even the undeveloped land. We are looking at perhaps moving ahead with that yet this year. We're looking at the cost and the funding, and that would be a project that could be done within the easements, we would need to attain those, and then the road, whenever it may be built, could simply be built over the top. It would be independent. But at the same time, we would have that service in place that would be a benefit to that area and really to the entire north side, especially as far as water is concerned. The Marina has been something we've been keeping an eye on for the last few years. It's been operated by a third party for, I think, well over 20 years. And over the last couple of years, the current operator has indicated their desire to, I think, retire and eventually not renew the contract. The last time the city bid out the operations, the current contractor was the only one that bid on the, on the operations. And if you've been following in the newspaper, Roger City is having its own difficulties in terms of getting a manager to oversee the operation of their Marina as well. So staff is looking at a plan that would eventually result in the takeover of the Marina by the city under its umbrella, sometime probably, either beginning in 2017 or 2018. Both the state and the city have made major investments in the Marina, and it's felt that we must attempt to develop a suitable plan for continuing its operation. In all probability, it will result in increased costs to the city, at least initially, placing further strain on an already tight budget. However, it could also provide us with the opportunity to expand upon our previous reprioritizing of the city's DPW department. By thinking outside the box, we may discover new operational procedures and organization that will mutually benefit both the DPW and the Marina. And staff will present its ideas during the upcoming 2017 budget process. The priorities, as I see it moving forward here for the balance of 2016 and probably some of this even beyond, one is just ongoing review of city operations. That's a major function for myself and for all the department heads to look at, making sure our policies, procedures are up to date, that they effectively serve our citizens and our businesses, and that we maintain a safe working environment for our employees. So those we will be looking at and updating as needed and bringing those to council for consideration. Our current health insurance plans, we've been fortunate that we had very, really almost a zero increase this past year, but we know that that's not likely to continue for any length of time. So we try, we are keeping a very close eye on our health insurance plan and those costs, and we are looking and will be putting out the bid, something we haven't done in a number of years, we will be doing here in the next few months for health insurance, if for no other reason to get a comparison and see whether what we have now is a good value or not. So we will be doing that. We have made it clear to employees when we informed them that we were able to continue with our present insurance, that there was no guarantee turning, once we go into 2017. So if we do have changes, they should not be unexpected to our employees. We are also, in fact, we will be beginning next Monday, negotiations with our fire EMS unit, bargaining unit on a new contract. Theirs expires in June 30th of this year. That will be a major priority for myself, T. Forbush, and HR Administrator Kathy Hines. The recently completed negotiations with our other bargaining units has laid a good foundation upon which to build. This other one is one that we've also had going on for a while, but I want to emphasize a couple of particular projects I want them, want them to work on, and that is Target Alpena. As I said, we've had a very good working relationship for them for many years, and especially since Jim Clerch came on board, the working relationship has, has even gotten closer. And we, myself and Adam, tend to be in contact with Jim on almost a daily basis. In the coming year here, 2016 and probably beyond, I'd like to see Target focus on two major issues. One, the marketing of our US-23 North property, with the fact that we are going to have the new TBTA facility going up this year, the fact that we have our permit, few ways, few steps still to go, but we anticipate to have our wetland permit that will allow our road to penetrate into that site. We believe this is the time to really do a very concerted marketing effort. And I intend to sit down with Jim Clerch on Target and with Adam and begin to look at what we can do to, to better market that, that property. The other, of course, is what I mentioned before, the redevelopment of the formerly APC property here downtown. That property is going to have a huge impact on our downtown and on our community as a whole, if we get the right development. And so especially, I know Adam will be working very closely with him, I will be, and I know Jim is already working on this. So this will have, as I said, a major impact, and city staff will do whatever it can to support that project. The final thing is Starlight Beach. Starlight Beach, Mishikewas Park have been, probably are two of our main parks and premier parks since I've been here. We, back in 2003, four, we did a master plan for both of those parks, and we've begun to see some of those improvements occurring at Starlight Beach with the pavilion, restrooms, the play structures that have been installed, and now working with Rotary Club on the splash pad. We see as a major addition and one that probably created as many comments when it was first proposed back in 2003 and four. And so we see an opportunity working with them to make that happen. And Rich Solinger has been very involved in that, as has Steve, and I know all of us will be working very closely with the Rotary Club to get plans together, begin looking at fundraising and costs so that we hopefully could have a project that we could look at construction by 2018. It's a couple of years away, but the time will go fast. The last one is, in fact, my report's a little outdated because I said the Alpena News will be publishing a piece on this, but they've already done it on, on RV Park in Mishikewas. I first heard of this when it was proposed by our consultant back in 2003, four, and I was told, oh, we did, went through all this back in around 1990. So I had to do some research and dig it up. And basically, this issue has always been one that, rather contentious, a lot of mixed opinions going both ways, and that can be seen again in the article that appeared in Saturday's paper. However, my own feeling is that since we did our master plan in '04, we really haven't seen much activity in terms of redeveloping, renovating that park as we have seen in Starlight Beach. Since I've been here, the water levels, that was the premier bathing beach when I came here in 98. By the time we were beginning to do the master plan, that was already beginning to change over to Starlight because of the lowered water levels and the issues that it created. And since that time, basically, the main things that have happened there is the ice arena was removed, torn down. The outdoor rink was no longer put up each winter and created. There have been volleyball courts developed by a local group, and those are flourishing down there. And we have rented out the warming shelter, the performance locker. Other than that, the park is, except at the 4th of July, pretty much is very underdeveloped. So what I am proposing is that city staff begin to look at this idea again. Not saying that we're going to do it, ultimately that's your decision anyways. It's not mine, it's not the staff's. But to put the information together, basically to look at things such as the public perception and opinion, the impact on the balance of the park, development costs, funding sources, potential revenues, city versus private operation, ongoing operational costs, and the, and the impact of such a development on tourism. I think, I, as I've said in the newspaper, I don't feel I'm doing my job if, when, if I don't at least look at that and bring information to council. Then you will make that decision that, yes, it's something to pursue, and no, it is not. Or if you want to take it to the voters to decide that, whatever case you may decide. But I think you can't make a decision if you don't have the information and the facts, and that's what we would be doing. Basically, I do diligence. So that would be the other thing I would like to see going as far as our parks. In conclusion, and I am at the end, I firmly believe our city is headed in the right direction with a strong and bright future ahead of us. Certainly, there will be challenges, obstacles, and setbacks along the way. But with the quality staff that has been built up over the years and effective leadership by council, I have no doubt that we will move forward toward our ultimate go, goal of a better Alpena. That's my State of the City for 15 and 16.
Well. Because we didn't keep doing it throughout.
Yes, and I didn't even make you stand up during various parts to applaud.
I've prepared a 15-page document myself to support that report.
You want to read it?
No.
It's only quoted eight.
There was some, Greg's been working on this for quite a while, as you can see, and it's a quality piece, and he got some input from council, and I talked to him a couple of times, and it was almost like each time we talked, well, I'm going to add this, and I'm going to make this shorter, and I'm going to add that. Probably could have gone on for quite some time, obviously, as far as what's been happening in Alpena, maybe not so much on what our future plans are, because there's only so much you can do, I suppose, as a council, but I thought it was fantastic. It's got a lot of good food for thought. As far as your recommendations for the couple of things, especially when you got to the end there, was about the only time that you actually asked for at some point some, some action from council to, to direct staff to look into the, to the park, for instance. I believe that was the only part. I don't know if you want to do that now or if you want to put that on an agenda for another time.
I guess I hadn't really thought about that. I guess I'd leave, I mean, it's out there. I've been asked if I've had any comments from the article coming back to me, and I have not heard anything, either good, bad, or indifferent regarding it. So I don't know if you want to give it a little time to see if there's any kind of feedback from, from the public, or you can, if, if council's interested, you could direct us, and that'll be something we will work on that this year.
Sounded like you already volunteered yourself to work on that.
Well, yeah, in staff, yes. I've already talked it over. We're there. But again, if, if it is not something that you want us to do, we certainly have plenty of other things to do that we won't move forward, but.
Yeah, I don't, personally, I would just as soon see some facts and, and numbers that relate a little bit better than the late 80s and early 90s on that project. A lot's changed in, in everything, pretty much every facet of the community and the, and the RV world, so I'm fine if staff wants to put some stuff together. I know that June has already worked on, on it a little bit with his time as well, because it's an economic development type of thing. He's, we've had conversations about it from time to time, so I know that he's already got some things that might be helpful, so.
Well, certainly, by him and his phone.
Got a huge issue with that or an issue at all. Any other comments on the, on the State of the City report?
Just a great appreciation, Greg, for putting this all together. There's a lot of thought and effort put into this as well. I like the section that you put together on priorities as you see them from your seat of our city manager. Helps us with some directions of where you think we should take the city and along with some of the thoughts that we've given you over the years. I think this is a great direction. I appreciate the wrap-up and the guidance that you're, you're giving.
I felt it was well-written and very positive and a nice little history we should refer to every now and then so that we never forget the directions that we said we would go. I really, I really liked the piece.
Yeah, if council's interested, we talked about, once I, I think I've got all the typos corrected now. We could put this on our webpage.
Good idea.
If you would so desire.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
We can put it down there. Probably tomorrow, Wednesday, get it up there.
Sure.
Probably tomorrow, Wednesday, get it up there.
Do you need a motion or anything?
You want a receipt and file or anything, Karen?
Not unless you want to.
Just a report?
Just a report.
I guess so. Awesome. Thank you again, Greg. Next up, communications and petitions. Councilmember Johnson requests to forward the landfill authority refund of $642.80 to the intergovernmental recycling program.
Okay, I'll give you a little history.
Please.
The Mount Runcie, Asco, Alpena landfill is in Loud Township. And at some point, the authority, the landfill authority, decided to charge tipping fees to the trucking companies who came to the facility of $2 every time they dumped. At some point, they decided to give Loud Township 10 cents on every dollar to help the impact on their road, so it was called the Loud Township Impact Fee. Last year, 2015, the authority decided to stop doing that, to stop giving that money to Loud Township. Why, how, I don't know. But this past, at the end of this past year, the county came to recycling and told us that they were going to not give them that money any longer, and they were more than willing to give it to recycling. But it's still up to each entity. They didn't give it proportional on who was using it, they just decided to divide it amongst all of us and send it back. So each, the city and each township got a check for $642.80, and we had decided, yes, we'll take that. But now it just depends on each board approving that that money can go back into recycling. It helps us to recover some of the costs that we've had, having to dump the garbage that we get in the bins and have to take to the landfill. So it comes to less than $5,000, all of us, but it helps the recycling board. So that's my request. Some of them have already turned it over. I mean, it's, it's money the county never had to turn over to the city. They could have kept it, but that was the intent of the money. So I'm requesting that. We approve.
Sure. I, not that it probably would have mattered, but I wondered whether there was going to be a connection between the landfill and the recycling, and you did make a connection there. My only question was this, somebody talked about this before, maybe Cam did, intergovernmental, somebody had mentioned this before.
He could have.
But I don't recall, is this a one-time thing, or is this now annually, or?
When they, when the county came to us, they said they couldn't guarantee this money every year, but this year they would give it to us. And we're more than, the recycling board is more than happy to take the money. So will this happen every year? If the county decides not to give it to us, they don't have to.
It's the county or is it the authority?
It's, the authority gave it back to the counties, and then the counties could keep it or do what they wanted.
Okay.
Alpena County decided they would give it over to recycling.
Okay.
You need a motion?
Did you have, were you going to say something?
No.
Sure.
We move that we forward the $642.80 to the recycling program.
Second.
And this money would be sent to Nankoff.
Okay.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Down to new business fiber lease agreement with Merit Network Incorporated.
In September of 2015, council authorized staff to continue to work with Merit towards finalizing a feasible right-to-use and maintenance room for fiber strands along Airport Road. They'd be leasing those strands from both the city and the county of Alpena, four strands from each, in each entity. You guys, you, council asked if we could work to finalize it, but also negotiate an increase in the upfront payment. They originally, Merit originally proposed $8,000, $1,000 per strand, and speaking with Bob Stowall from Merit, he was, he indicated he could increase the IRU amount up to $12,000. If he goes much higher than that, it's kind of cost prohibitive because the cost to do the project itself is about $14,000 or $15,000. So $12,000, as much as he, as much as he could do upfront, and then $700 standard maintenance. And so we brought that back to the tech committee and to county IT staff, and after discussing, it's my recommendation that we enter into the fiber lease agreement with Merit and Alpena County. And I would request that council authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on the city's behalf. And then further, as with most of all these agreements, we have a funding split with the county, we have a funding split agreement so that it always maintains that same 50-50 split. So I have that included with the memo as well for your review, and I'd let that the mayor sign that as well.
Steve, has this went to the county yet or not?
It has, yes. They've signed, yeah. We have the documents here that they signed off on.
Sounds all fine to me. See, it isn't getting any, any better, right?
No, I don't think so, no.
Thanks, Steve. No more questions for you?
No. I move we adopt the agreement for the distribution of fiber lease funds between the city and the county of Alpena.
Second. Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Abstain.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yep, there's a, there's a, I think Councilman Nielsen voted abstain. I think that is the procedure, if I remember correctly, that we have to vote to allow her to abstain prior to the vote.
I'm sorry, I thought you, we, I had a, I thought we'd already done that.
No, you have to do it each meeting.
Each meeting. I'm very sorry that I.
She did, and then we said when, we got to the point, if we were going to finalize it, then we'd.
Okay, that's why it was final last time.
Correct.
And that is for a conflict of interest with your son.
My son works for Merit.
But still.
I apologize when I bring it on.
It is, yeah. It'd be a family member that could directly benefit by virtue of the contract.
So somebody just make a motion that, Susan?
I move we allow Councilwoman, woman, sorry, Nielsen to abstain.
Second.
Person, council person.
Johnson?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
I reenter my motion approved the lease agreement.
Second.
Nielsen? Never mind. Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
I move we, second.
You are watching All About Alpena.